Four doors.
I'll change over to you in a second.
All right, that works, thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Scroggins, Athletic Director, for those of you who don't know me. Here tonight to bring Alex Macon from Genesis Sports Performance to give a presentation to our board. If you guys will look at some items that Alex does to present some options that we can go forward with if you want to. Honestly, and obviously, we're not going to vote on anything tonight, but we just wanted to bring this to you so you can look at it and basically see if there's money available for something like this. If not, you know, that's something you can tell us and maybe Alex will come back with a different proposal later. We know the school's already started, so this is not something we can do as far as August 1st, but going forward, we can look at all the options he brings. I can tell you that Alex and Genesis Sports Performance already worked with several of our students and also several graduating students. Big goals in that what Alex has provided for us is not just making students stronger, making them better athletes, but also injury prevention. One of the biggest injuries we have in sports today is the ACL tear with female athletes, and that's something that everybody thinks, oh, they go to Alex for to be, you know, get one inch higher on their vertical jump or more on the bench press, but the big thing is today with injury prevention, Alex does a lot for that for us as well. So I'm going to hand it over to Alex. Again, Alex runs Genesis Sports Performance. He also works for Hannover College as a trainer over there, strength and conditioning coach. So here's Alex Macon, and I stand by this guy. He's not just my neighbor, he's Zach Newsbaum's favorite trainer, so we're good doing it.
It's a small world if that's the case. All right, I'll give you guys these. So as Tom said, look, this is the thing, is a lot of what we do these days is post-injury, okay? I've got a lot of athletes that come to rehab. Okay, so a lot of what we do, and I say week, it's just me, I've got a background in sports performance, I've got a basic background in rehabilitation, prehab work, things like that. What we want to start focusing on, we look at schools like Madison, okay? They're going to see differences based on what they do beforehand, right? It's not just what the results are on the field, what we want to look at, the cost of, let's say, am I allowed to use names and stuff like that? So I'd say Chloe Leach, for example. I've been working with her for the last four, five months to get her to return to play. Her ability to play basketball, her ability to play softball is kind of now determined on what we're doing after the fact. If I can get your athletes beforehand, we can eliminate that frustration from, say, the Chloe Leaches. The injuries in general that we're going to see are going to come back to me anyway, right? To try and get them back on the court, back on the field, back in the pool, whatever we're looking at. What we want to do, so at Genesis, I look to basically take the preventative measure, okay? Are we going to prevent everything? Probably not. But what we want to do is we want to give these kids the best chance. So if we look at young kids, my population, as some of you guys are aware, 12 to 13 years old, they're in a very difficult position where they're starting to see growth spurts, they're starting to see hours upon hours of baseball, soccer, football, tennis, whatever it may be, they're not getting the correct strengthening. So by the time they hit 15, 16, 17, we're seeing significant injuries with all of these kids. So that's kind of the first premise to what we do. Can we reduce injuries and extend an athlete's career to the point that they choose to quote unquote retire, right? So if a young kid, random young man, Colton Deputy, for example, decides to play collegiate baseball, then great, that's when he decides to play baseball till. What I don't want to see are our young kids getting to junior high, high school, and not being able to play the sport they want to play because of a significant injury. And we'll use Tom's example of ACLs, for example, right? On top of that, obviously, sport within programs, sport within schools is highly regarded all around, okay? The money's invested into courts and programs and sports and things like that. What we want to do is we want to provide the athletes the same ability to perform on those courts. Basketball season, it's a long season, okay? Their kids gone from soccer to basketball to baseball. They're experiencing a lot of volume on their bodies. When they come to me, one, they have the ability to handle that, two, they have the ability to excel while handling that, and three, we start to become even more competitive than what you guys already are when it comes to the sporting world. So as a small school, what I'm trying to do is offer that cost-effective training, but with the high quality, if that makes sense. So we're looking to provide this, I'm looking to provide this, because not only do I hold what I do to a high standard, I feel it's important that we offer every single one of these kids the opportunity to do that. So on average, it's costing $23.88, I believe, $2,400 a year to train with me. By going with this proposal, by going through this contract, each of these children are able to get, what, 41% of what it's going to cost annually. Now, there's obviously those who can afford it, but I know there's a lot of athletes that can't. So what are we doing to make it a little bit more affordable? Because I know there's kids that maybe even can't afford that $1,000 a year. So what I'm trying to do is make it available to all of these students so that they can either excel, reduce injuries, prevent injuries, whatever we're looking at doing, we want to make this available to every student possible. So if you guys have any questions for me, I usually like to come back with some answers after. I mean, again, obviously, there's a couple of you that I train, you're individual athletes, have trained individual athletes. I've got a population of about 20 students from Southwestern already that work with me, and they've seen anywhere from six to nine inch increases in their vertical jump across eight weeks, three to five miles an hour in their speed, which, again, we look at that and we say their numbers. Physically, they're handling the demands of what we're asking for sport-wise. Baseball season, so I'll ask you, baseball-wise, I mean, world's going 24/24/7 with that. They're mixing that in with basketball, they're mixing that in with soccer. So there's a whole array of different sports that need different characteristics. My goal is to build it so that as he transitions from soccer to basketball, basketball to baseball, he's not experiencing those over-training type injuries that he can handle the demands. The time that I did train well, he saw significant improvements in his performance. Colton, same thing. Landon, we've seen significant improvement from him. So in general, what I do makes an athlete elite, and I want to bring that to you guys for the purposes of Southwestern schools, and again, I'm not a local, clearly. I am now, but it's one of those things that if other schools in the area have the availability of this, I want to bring it to you guys at an effective cost.
We have, obviously, how many students do we have? Middle school and high school? We have 600 students, I'd say. 50% decide to join the program. Could you handle that kind of volume?
Absolutely. Yeah, so we, now, when we run sessions, we run six per session, so as of December, so the long-term goal of this is to provide Southwestern schools with a strength and conditioning coach from Genesis Sports Performance. Until that time, okay, for me personally and professionally, the weight room here is unsafe, and it doesn't provide a safe environment for these kids to improve in their performance. What I'm looking at doing in these next few months and in the transition before we get an increase in facilities, or even just in general, training with me, they're available on their schedule, they're available to come in to a facility that's safe, that allows them to enhance their sports performance. Let's say we have baseball kids that train in the afternoon, tennis kids that train in the afternoon, I've got room in the mornings that I have kids come in, I'll have room in the afternoons, and as of December, doors will be open five days a week, and then one on Saturday. So it's one of those things that as I build, as I grow, as I get proposals like this put forth to the community, I can extend, I can build from where I'm at now, which is just me, to having a assistant, having a second assistant, and having more availability to open these times to more athletes.
So let's say we just have a student that, let's say he just wants to get in shape, would he be able to come to the program? Not, he's not an athlete, he's not a, he's just a student that says, you know, I want to work with, I want to improve myself, you know, my self-esteem, myself in general, would that student be accepted in the program even though he's not participating in a sport?
Absolutely. For me, fitness and health is very, very important, particularly for young kids. There is such a dark shadow over a lot of mental health issues and things like that. That would definitely be something that I'd be willing to adjust the proposal for, absolutely. Because I think it's important that, okay, I'll use Hannover as an example. On average, probably 20% of our students will quit their sport within the first two to four weeks, okay? Those students come to me, those students are looking for an avenue, they're looking for something that builds on their time that they're now not utilizing for a football, a soccer, a baseball, a tennis. And lifting for me has shown a lot of kids that there's something else out there other than the identity they create in the sport. So absolutely, I'm definitely up for that.
Alex, you said that if things weren't like something we could afford, we can modify based on talks with...
Yeah, so what I wanted to come to you guys, so obviously, look, this is a component that, it's not, it's not a secret that I'm also looking to make a financial gain from this, right? We can definitely adjust the proposal, we can definitely tweak the proposal. What I'm showing you guys is 41% of the cost of what general hour-long small group training runs for, okay? I feel like adjusting the price sensibly makes sense, that's totally fine. What I also want to do is I don't want to negate what we're trying to do, quality-wise with these young kids. And make it, make it not the quality that I'm aiming for to provide for the students at Southwestern, does that make sense? And look, this is the thing, obviously, there's always some wiggle room and cost, and I'd love to work with you guys on that, but I also would love to remain high-quality with what I offer and how I offer it. As I mentioned, financial gain's always there. Financial gain for me also allows more trainers to come in and provide more opportunities for those kids at different times as well, so. But yeah, I'd love to kind of sit down with you guys or whoever I'm sitting down with and find out what you guys would like to see, whether it is adjusting it for non-athletes as well. So yeah, John made your point. Parents, siblings, can we extend this to middle school? Sorry, what do you guys, elementary school down here? So yeah, is it something that we have younger siblings? Is it something that we can get families involved and you can kind of make it a much larger scale for what I'm offering at Genesis?
And with our weight room, Alex has been working with Coach Newsbaum and I on making that better for what he would like to be done. In the past, we've gone more, bigger, faster, stronger requirements for our weightlifting, which is heavy weights, machines, we've kind of gotten rid of some of the machines, going more for what Alex has done for our athletes, because most of our athletes are doing those kind of programs right now with their coaches. So by unsafe, it means to, for the kind of stuff that Alex needs us to do, we need to make some more changes in our weight room when we're doing that, but in the meantime, it would be something that they could go up to him until he got with us to get that ready. We're taking care of that on the athletic side, so.
Are you guys on the athletic side? Are you guys seeing schools transition to having a...
There are many schools that have strength and conditioning coaches that we play against in our area. I know that, for instance, South Ripley went with a local gym, where a trainer from South Ripley, graduate from South Ripley opened up a gym, and not necessarily the same thing, I would say, in my opinion, what Alex is doing is better, but you're seeing that Madison has gone in the past with, in the past, they went with...
Mad City CrossFit.
Mad City CrossFit. So those are some things we're looking at and we're seeing here, and of course, we've got Alex here who we've seen the results from our own athletes, and they've been tremendous. And then when he does the Hannover College, it's tremendous, so we kind of trust Alex over some other people, which is why we're presenting this with him today.
So would you be available for all sports? I mean, swimming, a band kid wants to develop more core strength to help carry a tuba, could you address anything like that?
Absolutely. This is what I think a lot of people overcomplicate, is, as I mentioned, a lot of kids are either versatile in their sports, but very rarely are we seeing a middle school, high school kid that's playing one sport. When I train a young athlete, I train them for the characteristics that they're required for movement, okay? If I can make you stronger, front, back, side, side, this angle, that angle, if I can get you to jump higher, run faster, overall endurance in what you can handle, we're creating better athletes, we're creating more functionally fit human beings. So when an athlete comes to me and I'm looking at rotation for baseball, rotation for basketball isn't going to hurt them, rotation for swimming isn't going to hurt them, rotation for tennis isn't going to hurt them. So when we start looking at all these characteristics, I think everyone gets so narrowed into, I need to train my son and daughter for baseball. We can do that, but at 12, 13, 14 years old, they just need to be trained to move well. If I'm on the band and I need to carry a tuba, getting them stronger, having them the, giving them the ability to handle, I'm going to be naive, I don't know what a tuba weighs, but I dare say it's not light. So just getting them more well-developed in their movement and their training is going to improve. And as Tom said, bigger, faster, stronger was great for those that handled it back in the day, okay? I dare say, if I had a chat with Tom on how he's feeling, he's probably not great right now. So we're looking at all these things, not so much in the now, but where Will Stockdale is in two years, where Colton Deputy is in five years, where the young band kid is, whether they want to go to a large school and be a part of the band. Obviously, the demands of what they're looking to do in their sport or their activity doesn't change, it's only going to increase. So if I decide to go to a college and I'm part of the Purdue band, I'm not saying the wrong school here, but that's the thing, the demands of what they're doing are going to increase. I talk to a lot of my adult clients, so when we look at the proposal, and obviously, we look at parents of kids, mom and dad are always going to foot the bill for their son and daughter to get better at sport. So now what we look at with this proposal is we go into mom and dad, we go into brothers and sisters, and people surrounding that athlete that also need, as adults, we need everyday fitness, we need to be able to pick things up off the ground, we need to be able to put things in shelves. So all of this stuff, I do adult training, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that, I do adult training and I do athlete training. So we train adults as adult athletes. You don't need to hit a home run as an athlete, but when I go down to pick something up, I don't want to pull my back out every single time. So all of these different components allow me to be versatile with the 79-year-old that I train and the 12-year-old, the 11-year-old, that I'm teaching how to sprint properly. So movement to me is the basis of what we're doing, and that's what I'm bringing to you guys, not just, hey, get me, obviously, that sells, I get a kid to jump higher, I'm going to post that on social media, I get a kid to run faster, I'm going to post that. But when my mom, dad decides to lift more than they've ever lifted and they're feeling good doing it, of course, I'm going to post that. But it's the middle stuff that I'm doing in between that allows them to do that, it's not just the cool stuff every single day. So the pieces of the puzzle all come together by the time I'm promoting that on social media and that sort of thing.
Any other questions, perhaps?
Cool. Thanks for coming.
Appreciate your time, appreciate you both.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Classified Employee Handbook, specifically the transportation pay. Obviously, it was tabled in July. And I have to apologize because I was not at July's meeting, so I will be leaning on you guys more than how we move forward in this situation. Your packet did have both the schedule they were on and the proposed new schedule. I will open up the floor for any discussion on this transportation pay scale.
I'm going to make a motion that we take no action currently on this. It's already in the school year starting, pay stays as it currently is, and then when we renegotiate pay for all bus drivers, we bring it back up again for the session.
Ms. Lee, are you saying that you're going to leave it like it is because that's what we're paying them on now? So you're going to leave it as the 21, 22 pay scale?
Yes, ma'am.
Like it is right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There's been a motion on the floor, is there a second to that motion?
I'll say the motion.
Discussion on this.
I'd like to thank Jason Watson and Laura for coming up with those numbers. I did speak to one of our bus drivers about it personally. There's just a lot more questions, and I think, kudos on trying to save the corporation money because we need to look at all venues of that, but I just feel like this is something that we need to visit later.
I have a question, Scott, going into super detail, because you guys hashed just out when you brought it to last month, but is this just an area that we, I know we're constantly looking at areas to save, is this, or is that something that just like in sequence came on, or was there something that drove this to be looked at? Is it, you know, because I've missed the last meeting.
The saving was a secondary matter. The primary reason was to try to develop clarity and consistency in how we pay in the transportation arena.
Which makes sense, I mean, if we're trying to get a more standardized way of doing business for all routes, especially like your extracurriculars and all that, I'm assuming trying to develop this scale for that. So we had a proposal to keep the 20, 21, 22 scale, and a second, any other discussion on it? If not, show of hands to keep that scale? Next up is donations. Seems like we've had quite a bit this time, so I'll read those. "Request School Board approval on accepting the following donations: $500 from Hannover Presbyterian Church for textbook rental assistance; $720 from an anonymous donor for student activities; $100 donation from Tri-Cappa for the counseling department; $100 from Sue Seigman for high school cheerleading; $51.45 from Elijah Chandler for the cafeteria lunches; $180 donation from Larry Seadam for high school softball; $35 donation Christie Gester for Southwestern Band; $25 donation Shalonda Kerr for Southwestern Band; $25 donation from Anita Taylor for Southwestern Band; and $50 donation from Jennifer Schott for Southwestern Band. Appreciate these generous gifts, I mean a motion to approve them."
My motion.
My second.
Any discussion on, all in favor?
My second, your, um, thank you, I think that's great.
Next up will be personnel. This is really lengthy, so. As we get into personnel, I want to do one thing, though. If you look at your agenda, I would like to remove, go to Employment and High School Secretary Donovan Birchfield, I will ask in the beginning to vote on that separate because I will abstain because that is a relative. So I won't want them, and the rest of them will all vote on, so.
Where was it at, Ruth?
It's Employment for High School Secretary Donovan Birchfield, I mean a motion to approve that.
No, we just do it now?
Yes, do it, I'm just asking for a motion.
Only a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? So that's three of them abstaining. Now, I will read the rest of them. So we have retirement from high school custodian Randy Branson; employment for technology education teacher Matt Longville; employment for long-term substitute elementary teacher Mackenzie Phillips; employment of elementary ESL aide Carolyn Richards; employment food service worker Amy Sumner; employment teaching aide Tina Hardy; employment for bus monitor Donna Hay; employment after the school detention proctor Mark Myers; employment for the high school fall coaches, girls varsity assistant cross-country Kim Crawford; girls JV basketball head coach Paula Fulton; boys JV basketball head coach Phil Wayland; the ninth grade assistant volleyball coach Megan Carlton; and appointment for middle school fall coaches and summer stipends; eighth grade volleyball head coach Camille Leach; seventh grade volleyball head coach Lindsay Wong; sixth grade volleyball head coach Renee Johnson; middle school boys tennis coach Gregory Klein; middle school cross-country head coach Stephanie Newsbaum; summer stipend for volleyball to be paid Chris Johnson; as summer stipend for boys soccer Seth Shields and Cam Rogers; employment for home event supervisor Sue Seigman; employment elementary morning monitor Title I aid and ECA sponsors; morning monitor B. Joe Spray, Title I aid Carol Gammons; and the following ECA stipends, elementary ESL coordinator Terry Densford; technologies Michael Howl; yearbook sponsors Jason Potteek and Lisa Taylor, they will split that stipend; math bowl coach Laura Scroggins; science bowl coach Zanet Bowman; sixth grade, or, spill bowl coach Laura Scroggins; robotic club coach Laura Scroggins; the following middle school ECA sponsors, middle school math bowl Laura Scroggins; middle school spill Laura Scroggins; middle school robotics Laura Scroggins; middle school student council Maureen Hensley; and middle school yearbook Brandon Fry. The following be high school ECA sponsors as follows: high school student council Bridget Scavera; national honor society Chris Johnson; junior class sponsor Matt Johnson; FFA middle school and high school Wesley Powell; high school yearbook Brandon Fry; TRAC teen reading activity club Cindy Myers; middle school high school technology coordinator Sue Seigman; senior class sponsor Nora Beans; sophomore class sponsor Stephanie Newsbaum; freshman class sponsor Melinda Gammons; shelter studies academic superbowl Camille Leach; marching band Alex Branstadter; marching band color guard assistant Ralph London; contest assistant to instrumental director Ralph London; summer band camp staff Clayton Seals; summer band camp Alex Branstadter; the Gota Parade Coordinator Alex Branstadter; and before-school care aides Angel Garcia and Marissa Naylor. and before school care aides, Angel Garcia and Marissa Naylor. Did I forget any personnel? If not, I need a motion to approve all of those.
Make a motion to approve. My second.
Any discussion? All in favor? For... Next up, we have conference requests. First up, we have a request from Don Moore, and that's for an ECA workshop from ISBO, that is a virtual one at fifty dollars, and it comes out three hundred, or fund three hundred. Matt Owens, Kristen By and Jason Watson, all have school safety conference request. Total cost, eleven hundred and fifteen dollars, and that's from fund three hundred. And then Cindy Myers, request for building success in and beyond the library using the Desting Manager, that's a virtual conference at a hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and that's fund one-on-one. And that is all of our conferences, so I need a motion to approve them.
I make a motion.
Second.
Discussion on any? All in favor? And then we move to budget and financials, so board.
Okay, the first thing is our out-of-state tuition. It's time to either renew what we've had for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, or we can change it if you prefer. It was two hundred dollars per month, charged for ten months if the student is in attendance on September camp day, our eighteen hundred dollars is paid for full school year upon registration of the student, or nine hundred dollars per semester if the student is registered at the beginning of the semester. And all the tuition is to be paid at the beginning of each month, our registration day of the student, by the student or the parents. And I would recommend that we approve the saying that we had as last year, unless you feel like it needs to be changed.
Do you have any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that. My second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you. The annual financial report, I hope all of you saw it in the newspaper, and I believe you received a copy of it with your packets, in your packets, that is required to be published every year, and Melissa helped me out a lot getting that ready this time, and it was in the newspaper on August the ninth, and it was sent to the state on August the fifteenth as we're required to do by law, but we need for the board to approve it in a motion, please.
So I need a motion to approve the annual financial report.
I'll make a motion.
My second motion.
Discussion on said report? All in favor of accepting?
Thank you. And then today was the deadline for an ECA risk report, which Don Moore has to do annually, and I do have a copy of it here. It was submitted today, and we also need approval on that by motion. If you want to look at it first and wait until the next meeting, that's fine, or if you feel comfortable, it has already been submitted to the state through the gateway process, and we do need to officially approve that report being sent to the state.
What's the specific calendar, just ECA financial?
It's the annual financial report of the, of the all extracurricular. It's just like the one that I did, or, you know, that we published for all of the corporation accounts and everything, it's all the receipts and expenditures for the last, for this physical year. So that was from July one of twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. It's all, every expenditure, every receipt, I can get each one of them.
So a motion, I mean a motion to approve the extracurricular financial report that was sent to the state meeting.
I'll make a motion. My second motion.
Discussion on it? Discussion, I know we've never had issues with our ECA being sent, just requested everybody gets a copy at the end of the meeting to have, if you want to go line by line for it, but I'm confident on voting.
We'll get you a copy.
Anybody else has any discussion on it?
Thank you, Laura and Melissa.
If not, all in favor of this motion?
Yeah, last thing I have is the budget update, it's not ready to go yet. I've been out a few days sick, and so it's thrown the off schedule, and I apologize for that, so we're about to stay in with the budget calendar like we had it. I may have to have an extra meeting in between because there's so many days, I have ten days from the before, to advertise it before the public hearing, then I have ten days after that that I have to adopt it. When I get ready, I will let you all know, and if we could maybe, I hope to work it into our regular schedules, but there's also deadlines on that, so as soon as I get it finished, I'm working on a big annual financial report right now, that's bigger than the one you're looking at right there that the ECA went in, there's another one that is due in gateway. So as soon as I get that finished, I'll be back on the budget again, and I may have to call you and see if you can come in and have another special meeting in between, but I apologize for that. That's all I have, unless you have any questions about anything.
So basically, we're at the point, when you get the budget, we'll be approving it so we can have the public hearing ten days later?
Yes.
That's where we're at, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Audience participation, anybody have any comments, concerns, anything else brought If not, we will move to Jeff for superintendent's report.
I just got a couple things. You should have received an email from Coach Johnson around the volleyball team, last year's volleyball team. We received over the summer news that our varsity volleyball team won the American Volleyball Coaches Association and United States Marine Corps Team Up Academic Award, and that recognizes athletes. The criteria is that the average GPA for the whole varsity team must be at least a three-point-three or better, and our team GPA was about three-point-six, seven. This is an award that our volleyball team consistently wins, so that's kind of a big deal as far as I'm concerned. I wish that, you know, all of our coaches would stress academics the way volleyball team does. Not that they, you know, not that they don't, but that this is, it's quite an honor that Coach Johnson and his kids earn, it seems like almost every year, so they do put their, they take their studies seriously, and that's what we're here for. So I just want to commend him and the last year volleyball team for that. And then the other thing that I have is the start of the school year has been probably the smoothest that we've had in my mind in numerous years, and that's just kudos to, you know, our teachers, our staff, our students. A lot of new things going on this year, and it's been a pretty smooth transition, and we seem to have picked up right where we left off last year, so I just want to thank everybody for the awesome start to the school year. That's all I got?
Jeff?
Just thanks to all of our staff, I know it's chaotic to get this first month in, it seems to be doing quite well. With that, do we have any board comments? Any board member have anything for the good?
I just think, just thoughts and prayers to Dean Andrew, Tony Andrew was a student here, played varsity athlete here, passed away unexpectedly last week, and I just think we should be thinking of a family and stuff.
Any other comments? All right, barring any crazy budget meetings, it looks like we're looking at September twenty-sixth as our next meeting, and going out further around October twenty-fourth for the October one. That is all subject to change based on budgets, so if there's nothing from the audience or anybody here in the room, I'll entertain a motion to dismiss.
Make a motion.
All in favor?